Okay, good evening. We'll go ahead and get started. This is the regularly scheduled city council meeting. It is Tuesday, January 2nd, 2024, and I'm calling this meeting to order. And if you'll please join me as we rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll ask the city clerk to take role.
Barbara Bynum.
Here.
J. David Reed.
Here.
Dave Frank.
Here.
Doug Glassbell.
Here.
Ed Ulliberry. All city councilors are present.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor Protim, are there changes to our agenda tonight?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have one addition to the agenda, which will be the new Item 8, Asbestos Abatement Assistance for Former Daily Bread Building.
Great, thank you. And I see that reflected in the amended minute, or not minutes, the amended agenda that was made available tonight. Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is the call for public comment for non-agenda items. So every item on our agenda tonight that we vote on, there will be public comment relative to that agenda item. But if there's anyone here from the public who wishes to make public comment about general things, not agenda items, this would be that time. Is there anyone, just by a quick show of hands? Because if there is, I'll read some more language. Is anyone here tonight to make general public comments to council? Okay, see none, I will skip that. But I will read what pertains to the public comment when we get to agenda items, which is that no formal action is taken when we, I mean, you've, I'm messing this all up, sorry. We welcome public comment on every item we're voting on. We limit comments to three minutes. And we do ask you to introduce yourself with your name and your neighborhood or the part of town you live in. And that helps us just to see where you're coming from, literally. And like I said, we'll do that when we get to those agenda items. Okay, moving on. Number six on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda. There are two items on our consent agenda. Council consideration of the minutes of the December 5th, 2023 regular city council meeting. And council consideration of the designation of the City of Montrose website as the official posting location for meeting notices with the bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall as a secondary location for use in exigent emergency circumstances. So both those are on our consent agenda tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you very much. Please use your laptops to vote electronically on this item. And that passes 5-0 unanimously. So we're going to get into our action items. And our first one, I'm going to actually recuse myself from since I live in that neighborhood and it affects me. So I'm going to step out of the room and turn it over to Mayor Protim Reed to take care of this agenda item.
Okay, this would be item number seven. City Council Consideration, Ordinance 2653 on Second Reading, an ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, creating the Otter Pond Circle Utility Relocation Special Improvement District. And I'll turn that over to City Attorney Chris Dowsey.
Thank you, Mayor Protim Reed, members of council. This is the second reading of the creation of the Otter Pond Circle Utility Relocation Special Improvement District, or SID. This has been before council several times in the different phases of creating this SID. So I'll keep this very brief. If any members of the public would like to get a full recap, this was discussed at length at the November 6th work session. There was a resolution of intent to create this SID passed on November 14th. And the first reading was on December 5th. If this passes on the second reading, the SID will be created. And the next and final time this will be brought before the council is for the final assessments. And this is after the utility relocation is complete. As a reminder, the HOA originally brought this forth and has a vast majority of the HOA members signed the petition. Additionally, to my knowledge, we have not received any letters of dissent from any of the residents. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Comments? Is there any public comment? This does, this ordinance on second reading does call for a public hearing. So I'll open the public hearing and call for public comment, please. Yes.
Good evening, council. My name is Christina Files. I am, I live in Otter Pond and I am the Otter Pond HOA Board President. Just am here in support and to thank you once again for considering this SID.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Becky Wa and I live in Otter Pond. And I would just like to express my appreciation for the creation of this SID. It's going to be very helpful to some of my friends and neighbors. And as we know, there's always a ripple effect. And when people in our community are helped, it helps the whole community and it helps the whole town, too. So I'm very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hello, my name is Mary Bergner. I live in Otter Pond. And I just wanted to say I really appreciate your help. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so do all my neighbors that aren't here.
Any other public comment? Hearing none. I'll close the hearing and ask for a motion, please.
I move to make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2653 on Second Reading as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Please vote. And the motion passed four to zero, actually, with one abstention. Sure, I'm going to rule.
Okay, moving on to Item 8, which was the item we added tonight. This is asbestos abatement assistance for former Daily Bread building. This is council consideration of funding in the amount of $98,375.97 for asbestos abatement in the historic Daily Bread Creative Corner Building at 344-346 East Main Street. And I will turn this over to Anthony Russo, our business development guy.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor, City Council. I appreciate it. Give us one second. They're going to pop me back on the screen here so you guys can see what I'm reading through. Thank you, Lisa, Greg. So the Daily Bread building, as we all know it, right here on the corner at 344-346 East Main Street, has been purchased. It was purchased a little over, well, about a year ago we started this process, let's say. It was really important to activate that space. That Daily Bread restaurant has been there for a very long time. So the new owners are looking to put office space upstairs and to have the restaurant downstairs. And that's what they're working on right now. Before that can be done, they have to get the asbestos cleaned out of the building. As we know, these historic buildings are riddled with asbestos. This is not a new issue that's been brought before council. And so this request is being made on behalf of the applicant in order to assist them and make sure that public safety and everything is in line with what our expectations are with the city. So the ask is, as you mentioned, for that $98,375.97. Just as a matter of importance, 50% deposit was made at the time of selection in order to lock in the contract price, which was $30,000 less than the competition. And they, so they went ahead and made that deposit. Typically, we pay directly to the contractor. So I just want to make sure that was made aware at this moment in time for your consideration. And the job is supposed to be set for January 4th. So I appreciate you guys putting this before council this evening. Thank you. And with that, any questions for myself and the applicant is here this evening as well.
Just to clarify one thing that you just said. They advanced the 50%. So if we approve this, we would be reimbursing the applicant for the 50% and paying the balance directly to the contractor?
That is the request this evening, correct?
Thank you.
And we did discuss this at this morning's work session in some more detail. So if anyone is watching and wants to hear more about this project or the applicant's plans, that is all on the recording from the work session of the same date.
Does council have any additional questions this evening on this item?
Okay. We will have public comment on this agenda item. Is there anyone from the public who would like to make any comments before council makes a decision?
Okay, I don't see any, so would welcome a motion from council.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve $98,375.97 for asbestos abatement in the historic Daily Bread Creative Corner Building at 344 and 346 East Main Street.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Please vote. Anthony, while we're waiting for those votes, does the building actually have a more historic name? Like, like, other than the Daily Bread building?
I would leave that to the applicant, if you want to call the applicant up to share that information.
Actually, yeah, I would like to know. Because I think they'd probably like us to stop calling it the Daily Bread building. So this is their chance to get it on the record. Would you please introduce yourself?
Yes, thanks, council. My name is Craig Hasto. And I believe the first pictures that I have seen was Callaway Brothers Grocery Store.
Cool.
So.
Okay, well, we'll either call it that or we'll call it your business. But we'll get out of the habit of calling it the Daily Bread building as soon as we can.
No worries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a good, the Callaway?
Callaway Brothers and the E.J. Matthews Murkens Isle were the original names.
Nice, thank you. Okay, meanwhile, it probably flashed on there while I wasn't paying attention. Did that pass? Thank you, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Four to one. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. You are welcome to stay for as much of the meeting as you want. But you also are welcome to leave and it isn't rude. So thank you very much. Okay, moving on to our next item is item number nine. This is the Cobble Creek West Utility Service Agreement. This is council consideration of a utility service agreement with Chappeta Water District and West Star Development LLC to provide City of Montrose water service to the Cobble Creek West Edition. City Engineer Scott Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Lisa, could I steal the projector? I was making fun of Jace for his not working a minute ago. And karma is now doing its thing. There we go. I'll never say anything bad about your computer again. So no changes on this agreement since we discussed it at work session. But I'll give a quick overview for anyone joining in. This is a request for expansion of the city's water service area to our, the ability for the city to serve outside of its existing water service area and within Chappeta's water service district for the Cobble Creek West Edition. So kind of help orient everybody on this map. Kind of the developed area here, shown in the middle, is the kind of Cobble Creek Golf Course proper. Outside of that, there's Spruce Point to the north, which is kind of a separate development working on its own water agreement. And then this Cobble Creek West, which was annexed back around the time of the original Cobble Creek development. But they never cleaned up the water districts. When Cobble Creek came in, because it was urban levels of development, they came out of what would have been Chappeta's at that time for the larger development and came into the cities. Because the rural districts generally aren't able to provide fire protection. And they don't size their lines hydraulically to be able to do that. And they also haven't, you know, secured a lot of water resources at the scale that supports urban levels of development. They're more geared towards the slower rural paces of development and have kind of set up their systems appropriately. So between the districts or between the water service areas and the water providers, there is a mechanism to expand or contract where it makes sense to service the other areas. And that's what's going on here. So the developers who are looking to do this have also negotiated with Chappeta. They typically come with a buyout. That's something Chappeta does, or the other districts often do. So they've worked through all of that and are now looking to get the final approval from the city for us to agree to service that area. Water resources are very, obviously, a very sensitive thing in the, in the Western US right now. So we don't take these things lightly. We spent a lot of time working on our master planning to make sure that serving this area is doable while preserving the water resources we do have, making sure we can serve all of our existing obligations within our existing district. That was about a year-long effort. Through all of that, we have determined that there is excess capacity available to service this area. Another nice part of it is we can also set terms on it. So within this, you know, the agreement allows for the city to serve it as long as they kind of do what they say they intended to do, which was an urban level of development. If it goes back rural, we would ask that they go back on Chappeta's because what we don't want in the city system is sprawl. And when you build it to that level of fire protection sprawl, you end up with a, you know, a high cost for very few units and you can't recoup those, that, the infrastructure and operate it financially. The other piece is, is it allows us to put some conditions on the use. And so kind of the big ones to think about are, you know, water-wise landscaping within their covenants for their neighborhood residential lots. And then the big, another big one is use of irrigation water for any HOA or right-of-way landscaping. If they have open space areas, those would need to use irrigation water. So the city water is just for the residential use. And within that, we also ask for the, again, the water-wise landscaping. And so we feel like it's a good, great balance point to kind of facilitate what was originally envisioned with the original Cobble Creek development, while still making sure we're being great stewards of our, of our water resources. So this is a three-way agreement. It's been signed by the developer and the, and Chappeta. It's been approved by their board, so we're kind of the last stop in the process. And if approved, we would sign, record tomorrow. And then I think they're looking to move forward with some of their development plans. So it also puts a timeline constraint on it, one thing I forgot to mention. So, you know, we don't want people to come, get city water, and then sell their land for double and do nothing with it and tie up our water resources. So this also has a provision that, you know, they have to maintain a certain degree of kind of development pace so that they're actually doing something with it. And if they don't, it just reverts back as well. So another protection for the city. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Counsel, are there any questions for Mr. Murphy?
I do not see any. So I would have, accept a public comment on this particular agenda item. Is there anyone from the public who wants to make comment? I do not see any, so we could entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to enter into a utility services agreement with the Chappeta Water District and the West Star Development LLC to provide City of Montrose water services to the Cobble Creek West Edition as presented.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. That allows us to move on to Item 10, which is the North Woodgate Extension Phase 2 Memorandum of Agreement. City Council Consideration of a Memorandum of Agreement with the Marketplace West Condominium Association to create the framework for right-of-way acquisition and completion of the North Woodgate Extension Project Second Phase. Again, City Engineer Scott Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Same on this one, no changes since work session. So I'll give a quick overview. The map showing up on the screen here is the kind of Woodgate, East Oak Grove area. So kind of in the middle of the screen here is Big Five, Office Depot and those. And then down at the bottom end is a circle, which is meant to denote the new roundabout coming in where the Woodgate realignment now joins East Oak Grove, just east of Walgreens. So the area in red on this map, which is the area for anybody who's colorblind, south of the Marketplace Shopping Center, which is Big Five, Office Depot, those Calvary churches in there. The red area has been secured through an existing development agreement that we approved last year and are working on. With that, we'll construct the new roundabout. We secured the right-of-way, actually record the plat tomorrow, and are constructing the roundabout starting in the fall of this year and the first phase of the extension, so that red portion. This will also help support the new All Points Transit Center going in on the northeast corner of that. We didn't want to do that and have a road to nowhere. It's still, it's still meaningful, but you'd probably end up with some adverse parking lot short cutting for people to snake their way over to it. And it's, it really just becomes a lot better if it connects to something. And so at the same time we were working on that, we were working with the Marketplace condominium owners to see if it would be viable to secure an alley right-of-way of sorts to allow connection up to Encanto. Ideally, in the future, we can even go further and get up to Church Street, which that lot hasn't developed. So it's probable, as that develops, we'd be able to secure that because all of that is in the interest of all the businesses in there to have, provide access down to East Oak Grove, which gives them access to a signal instead of trying to hang a left coming out of Big Five or Murdochs. And so this creates the framework to do that. So, you know, they don't want to dedicate right-of-way right off the bat if it was all still on speculation because this is probably at least two years out to build. And so this memorandum of agreement creates a framework that, you know, if we choose to move forward with the project tentatively scheduled for 25, 26, or 2025, 2026, that they would be willing to dedicate. It's, in this case, it's a right-of-way easement. We didn't want to do rights-of-way because it would create, formal rights-of-way because it would create setback issues with the building. But it gives the easement necessary to then modify, pipe the ditch, modify, widen the area to add some sidewalks and a two-lane vehicle pathway while still maintaining all of the access for operations and loading and all of that behind those box stores. So this creates that framework. We were the first signature on this one, but we've been working with their condominium board. The whole building is managed by a condominium association. And they're, they're in agreement and seem eager to move forward. And again, they, it's good for us from a traffic safety and avoiding, you know, there's a lot of people that hang a right and then take a U-turn, which is kind of just adds unnecessary load to Townsend there. But also is great for volumes, for safety. You have a couple residential neighborhoods back there that were built before Townsend was as busy as it was. And also good for the businesses because as long as, if they have poor access, their, you know, viability goes down. So this will help kind of keep vitality up in this area by giving good access. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. And like all of our items, we did discuss this extensively at a prior work session. So anyone who's super curious can go back and look that up from last December.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Murphy?
I just have the one, I believe there's also projected later on to be some work on Oak Grove and Townsend. Is that correct?
Yes, so that intersection was part of the capacity studies we did last year. Even without a study, everybody knows that intersection is lacking a lot. We've had a good, good discussions with the representatives for the federal government who own the southwestern quadrant there, which is right-of-way necessary to, to get that secured to then do the widening and lane alignments. It's going to be a pretty healthy project. So it's not budgeted yet, but we are, have had good recent movement. Actually, meet them next week to try and get some of that finalized for, to clean up the right-of-way to then allow an intersection capacity improvement project to move forward in future budget years. So yeah, that's also on the radar and very needed in that area.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Okay, then I would accept public comment on this agenda item. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? See none, would go back to council for a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Marketplace West Condominium Association to create the framework for right-of-way acquisition and completion of the North Woodgate Extension Project Second Phase as presented.
Second.
Thank you very much for the first and the second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you all very much. Next item is Item 11. This is the 2024 Annual Annexation Report and Three Mile Plan. I am actually excited to hear about this. I said that this morning. I wasn't kidding. So this is council consideration of the 2024 Annexation Report and Three Mile Plan. We are required to update this every year. And so I will turn this over to our planning manager, Jace Hotbell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I got a new laptop and it seems to be working flawlessly right now. So just wanted to mention that. And now it's frozen. Thanks for the intro on that. I think, Mayor, you're spot on. This is a requirement every year. And this presentation's probably not going to look too much different from really the last couple of years. What this is, is the 2024 Annexation and Three Mile Plan. And it has to be approved every year prior to a formal annexation going through the process. You actually have an annexation next on the agenda. So we wanted to make sure we got this in front of you before that. As far as the Three Mile Plan boundary, like I said, it's a statutory requirement that we file every year. Shown on the screen here is the current Three Mile Plan, which is actually unchanged from last year's, meaning we didn't have any annexations that were on kind of the outer boundaries. We actually had annexations kind of more or less primarily infill locations or filling in some of the gaps that exist. As far as the annexation policies and priorities go, the city's annexation policy and priorities really, again, have remained unchanged. And the goal is to annex from the city or the center of the city out into the outlying growth areas. This helps avoid the spider web annexations and the leapfrog developments and just overall sprawl. For annexations, we consider property owner requests, qualified enclaves, city-owned properties in areas expected to develop as urban with city services. The primary annexations, we see are really private owner annexations. And that's the bulk of what, what came through in 2023. There will likely be some city annexations, just some cleanup annexations as we go into 2024 with some rights-of-way. But we'll bring those at a future date. This map reflects the eligible enclaves in 2023. The map on the left, I should say. What it reflects is a total of 41 enclaves and 588 acres. Again, this is actually reduced slightly, I believe, from 2023 or 2022. But not a whole lot of change on this one. And then on the right side is the growth areas map. And we present this pretty much at every rezon or annexation just to reflect exactly what growth area a property is within. Growth Area 1 is the area closest to the core of the city and represents the most cost-efficient area for the city to grow. Growth Area 2 has some level of existing infrastructure in place, but it's further outside the core than Growth Area 1. And then lastly, Growth Area 3 is the furthest from the core, generally with minimal infrastructure. This is a city utility infrastructure map. And what this reflects is just the water service areas within Montrose. A majority of Montrose residents are served by the City of Montrose for water. However, other service providers do exist. Those include Tri-County, Minokene, and Chappeta. So with all annexations, we would confirm where appropriate extension of sewer service also comes into play in accordance with our wastewater service and treatment agreement with the city, the county, and the West Montrose Sanitation District. Another map here is just the road infrastructure map. And this is directly out of the comprehensive plan. And for each annexation we look at, we just confirm what roadways need to be reserved for future right-of-way. So this is always looked at when we have new properties come in for annexation. And then the same goes for the parks, trails, and open space. We look at, again, maps directly out of our comprehensive plan, see where service areas are lacking and determine if parks and open space is- are lacking, and determine if parks and open space is a necessity in certain areas that are to be annexed. And then this slide's just an overall outline of the standard utility companies as well as kind of the standard provisions within the code, and this is directly in the report as well. And then lastly, kind of the funner part of this presentation is what has been annexed in 2023. So what this shows is a total of six annexation requests and one disconnection or de-annexation request. This totaled 25.87 acres of newly annexed property, but it actually, that single disconnection was 25.82 acres. So we had a very small total of newly annexed property. That .07 is the net overall. So while we've been very busy with annexations, it might not necessarily reflect that with that number. And with that, that really concludes my presentation. Again, nothing new or hugely unchanged from what you've seen in the past, and there will be an annexation that follows directly after this, and you'll likely see a few more in 2024.
Great, thank you very much. We do approve this annexation report and Three Mile Plan, so I would accept any public comment before counsel votes on this. Any public comment for the annual annexation report and Three Mile Plan? See, none would come back to counsel.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2024 Annexation Report and Three Mile Plan as presented.
Second.
Thank you, please vote. And that passes unanimously. So that will take us to our next agenda item, which is item 12. This is the Blowers Addition Annexation. And this is, actually, will be item 12 and 13 because when we annex property, then what we do is we zone it, and in order to annex it, we vote on a resolution and ordinance. So these are always multi-part from counsel's point of view and what we vote on. But when I turn it over to staff, there is usually a comprehensive presentation that includes all that information. And so we'll hold a hearing on the annexation, and then we will consider the zoning. So I'll turn it over to staff planner, William Reese.
Thank you and good evening, Madam Mayor, members of city council, and members of the public.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, I know Mr. Blowers owns a school with him, and recently I had just a very short conversation with him concerning the annexation. And should I recuse myself in this?
So you would recuse yourself if you had a financial interest or you felt like you couldn't be impartial, and I will ask our city attorney to add on to that?
Yeah, so if you have a family financial interest in this or any other sort of interest, excuse me, then yes, I would ask you to recuse yourself. However, if you've, I mean, I don't know as to what the conversation was. I don't know if you have been given extensive knowledge as to what's being brought before you. That also would be a reason to recuse yourself. If there's going to be a lot more information than what is going to be presented to you right here today, then that is likely the ex parte communication that I would step away from. So.
Okay, just to be honest, I probably should just abstain.
So if you're going to recuse yourself, then you would not take part in the discussion or be here for them, and you would leave for the whole agenda item. Okay? Is that what you want to do?
No, I'll just.
So you'll stay and vote? You feel like you can vote on this and be impartial, and you don't have additional information that the rest of counsel won't get?
Won't, yeah.
Well, so we're hearing information from our staff. They're going to tell us about this property. Are you going to have more information than the rest of us?
I don't think so.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Reese, you can continue.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of city council, and members of the public. We have spoken several times about the Blowers Addition in the past, most recently on November 7th, where you voted to set tonight as the official hearing date for this annexation application, and two weeks from now will serve as the second reading for the ordinances. The Blowers Addition is a proposed annexation, which is approximately 15.22 acres in size. Because that is over 10 acres, we were required to submit an annexation impact report to the county at least 20 days prior to tonight's hearing, and that has been completed. This is within the city's urban growth boundary and the city's sewer and water service areas. The proposal does meet the 1/6th contiguity requirement as set forth by the state. This annexation actually consists of three separate properties and a small sliver of right-of-way. The annexation agreement and petition has been signed by all property owners, so 100% of owners are in agreement. They are requesting RL zoning, which is our rural living district. This is intended to provide for farms, ranches, and cluster development with open space and is designed to dovetail with allowed county residential densities. There is existing RL to the south as well as some R6 medium-density manufactured housing district across the road and some I-1 light industrial district, which is the airport property. One little quirk about the RL zoning, this is the only zoning district in which the code does not already have a minimum lot size or a minimum density. And as part of any application for an annexation or a rezon to RL, there also needs to be a condition added that will determine the minimum lot size. The applicants have requested one-acre minimum lots. That's actually the minimum lot size for the current county zoning, and so if approved, their request would be consistent with what's already allowed there. The RL zoning that exists to the south was also approved with a one-acre lot size. This is the annexation plat itself. This shows that the existing property lines, shows the existing property lines with the contiguity with city limits, which exists on the eastern, western, and southern borders of the annexation. According to our future land use map, this is primarily shown as residential mixed density low, which implies that the area is appropriate for single-family homes and some attached developments such as townhomes or duplexes. There's also a part that is technically designated as employment center on the western side, though this is primarily a reference to the airport property as our future land use map does not necessarily conform exactly to property lines. According to our growth area map, this falls within Growth Area 1, which represents existing or proximity to existing infrastructure and represents the most cost-efficient areas for the city to grow. And so in summary, the area meets city and state annexation policies, the comprehensive plan, and is consistent with the public health, safety, and welfare. The annexation agreement has been signed by the applicant and the impact report has been filed with the county. We did bring the proposed zoning to the Planning Commission at the November 8th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting, where they did vote to recommend approval of the RL rural living zoning district for the minimum lot size of one acre with a six-to-one vote. City staff recommends approval of Resolution 2024-01, Ordinance 2654, and Ordinance 2655 on first reading as presented. If there are any questions, I am happy to answer.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions about the annexation or the zoning of this property at this time? Okay, then what we'll do is we'll take each one individually and accept public comment. So the first one is Resolution 2024-1, which is counsel consideration of a resolution and findings of fact for the annexation of the Blowers Addition. Is there any public comment on that portion? Thank you, come on forward. Please introduce yourself for the record with your name and either your address or your subdivision, what part of town you live in.
Hey, my name's Don Blowers. I live on 6450 Road. This is a subdivision that we started in the county almost two years ago. I think the city needs to maybe have some new rules or regulations with the county because there's been lots of confusion as to what we were supposed to do and what we could do and what we couldn't do. And the city, I have a question, I don't know who can answer it, but does the city require a property to be annexed just because it's on the city water line?
I believe the city doesn't force annexation, but we do charge water customers who are outside the city an additional premium if we serve them. If anyone on staff, feel free to correct me or add additional information.
Yeah, generally, annexation is a, our utility connections are the primary driver for annexation. Water is the exception because you get these weird ones that aren't within the growth areas or are completely detached from the city. So like Riverwood is a great example, that where that one and a half X comes in. But yeah, primarily general practice and best practice, and the code is written to encourage, annexation comes with utility connection. Without a property tax, there's really not any other driver for annexation.
Sure, so oftentimes when septic systems fail, we see folks coming to the city and wanting to be, and wanting sewer service, and in that case, we tell them you would need to be part of the city to get sewer service.
Yep. In those cases, sometimes you can have a MOA that gives you kind of the gap between the two because a lot of times those are an emergency situation. But yeah, same, same story, and that's primarily the driver. Utility connection.
Okay, the reason I asked that question is on 6450 Road, if you would bring that map back up, it'd be easier to explain, but on 6450 Road, there are numerous parcels that are still in the county that are on city water line. Lot number one on that plat is actually off of a county road 650 feet from the city water line. I would have no problem with lot number two and lot number three being annexed into the city, but lot number one, just thought makes sense to be annexed into the city because there's a tri-county water line 100 feet away and a city water line 650 feet away.
So sir, this is your property. Are you saying you don't want to annex it into the city?
Well, that's why I asked that first question. I was told that we had to annex all of it if we hooked onto the city water.
I guess this is a question for staff. I'm not sure how we got to this point, if there's some misunderstanding on the applicant's part, and I thought this.
Well, maybe there's miscommunication.
Was asking to be annexed.
I'm sorry, maybe there's miscommunication on my part, but we didn't want to be annexed into the city just because we had to hook onto the city water line, especially on lot number one, because like I say, it's plum to the west, 325 feet to the property line, and then another 300 feet to the house site.
I'm going to suggest that perhaps this item should be, I don't know if the word is tabled or, I'm not sure legally what we call it, but that we don't, we pause right here, we get you and staff working together some more to figure out what's going on and make sure we're all on the same page, and then this item would come back to us at a future date. Is the word table?
We have, we have.
Where we go take action?
We have several places in town that are on tri-county water.
We do, but I'm not sure if we're going to solve this right now via public comment forum right before we vote on something.
I think a motion to continue this.
A motion to continue, I would entertain that.
Okay, can I ask another question?
Sure.
We've already been held up for over six months waiting to get to this point. We could have had the house two-thirds built if we had been able to hook onto tri-county water, or if we had just been told that we have to hook on the city water, but you don't have to be annexed. That communication didn't happen, whether it's my fault, their fault, it don't matter.
Well, we can vote to annex you tonight, or we can table this so you can get more information.
Well.
I think the biggest driver for us is if you're trying to hook on not only to the water, but if you're trying to hook onto the city sewer system.
We will not be hooking onto the city sewer system.
But I can maybe chime in a little bit. So yeah, long history here as we've worked through, because it, and these are pretty common on these where you have developments on the fringe that have tri-county lines, there's a, there's a city water line, there's a tri-county line, there's a sewer that serves the southern, could serve the southern lots, but the northern lots are far enough away, things of that sort. So what drove the annexation, and yeah, if we want to table it, we certainly can, kind of a long history of how we got to this area. Because originally, typical development in the city would drive, you're within the city's growth area, you're within the city's water service district, you're within areas serviceable by sewer, and so that drives annexation. They originally had to hurry up and get a minor subdivision done in the counter to create two lots to do a sale, and we said, that's fine, but when you come to connect the city utilities, that's when you'd have to annex, and that's why we're here. The, as far, so on the water piece, there is a city water main on the 6450 Road frontage. For the rear lot, that requires, you know, running a line out to the city's water district, but we've been working with tri-county on district cleanups and generally, and back to the point of there's some that are on city water that aren't annexed. So this whole reach was, it was called the Mesa Water Company, and it failed, you know, back in the day, well before I started, maybe 20-some years ago or something, but kind of like what happened with Fruit Park or with the recent water district failure, that they went insolvent, the city ended up taking them over, and they didn't. For those that were already out and rural, didn't have contiguity, a lot of them signed pre-annexation agreements that allowed a city to annex it will, but they didn't annex because with being within the city's growth area, they knew that the city wanted to go there long-term, and that's what, you know, long range, that becomes more urban. In this case, on the water, we've been working with tri-county, they were working on cleanups over on Hillcrest, 6500 Road, I think it is, and then here on, or 6600, and then here on 6450 Road. There is plans to kind of switch over and clean up some of those because they do have little remnant parcels throughout here that they're serving one or two, and the city's serving one or two. It's pretty inefficient for both. And so the whole point of the water districts that were created when they were was that as development occurs, they're coming on to the cities. You know, there's always going to be onesie-twosies exceptions, but in this case, the city water main is available along the frontage. We felt that was reasonable to come on to city water. As far as the southern lot, if I remember right, the southern lot has sewer availability. The northern ones, the line out there is so big and so deep that it was pretty disproportionately expensive to do a sewer main extension for two lots, and so we allowed an exception to our code for those northern two to be served by septic. But we understood they planned to do commercial levels of development, which couldn't generally be done on, or a commercial-type development on the southern lot, and if I'm wrong here, correct me, Don, that you can't do septic for, and the sewer is available on those lots. And so with contiguity and the upcoming development plans, that's what drove, as I remember it, annexation of the parent, just so we don't have to do it multiple times or have a multi-stage annexation in order to keep contiguity. So that's the history, and that's how we got here. Certainly, if we want to revisit any of that, we're open to it, we're happy to discuss. But I mean, we've talked about this at a staff level 10 times probably in 10 different meetings. There's kind of a long history that got us to this point, and, you know, working through what we think is reasonable to stay in line with the comp plan and not be overly burdensome. And that's how I've gotten to here, but if you want to table it, that's certainly fine. I'm just pleased to keep in mind that that would push out the, push out the date.
I have a suggestion, where maybe we're thinking along the same lines. We can pass the first reading. It takes two readings to pass this, correct? On both the annexation ordinance and the zoning ordinance.
We have to approve the resolution, but then the two ordinance is required two readings, and if we voted.
Tonight.
Gave the applicant time to meet with city staff, but we keep the ball rolling so that you're not further delayed, I think that would be in everybody's best interest.
Right. What we're saying is, we have to, to actually annex your property and zone it, we have to meet and vote twice. So we can vote tonight to move it forward. You can keep discussing this with staff to make sure it's really what you want to do and is in your best interest because we don't want to force you to annex. And if you decide not to, we simply won't vote a second time, and it'll, it'll be dead there and won't go forward. But meanwhile, we continue to move forward so as not to hold you up. Does that make sense?
Yes. The thing is, if we're not going to be able to hook on to tri-county water, we're still going to have to hook on to city water, and it's going to cost us a lot more money, both now and month-wise, because city water's twice as much as tri-county water per 6,000 gallons of water. But if it's not annexed, then he don't have to pay city taxes and stuff.
Well, we don't have any property taxes, so you won't, you don't pay any additional property taxes for being in the city.
But you do pay city sales tax.
You do pay city sales tax, but that's most noticeable if you purchase a large item like a new refrigerator or a car, and are delivered to your property or you're registered at your property. But other than that, there aren't differences in property taxes, just so we're on the same page.
And just, this would give you the opportunity to meet with staff, and after you've had your final meetings with staff, you can indicate to them that you no longer wish to pursue the annexation because it's your choice, and you can, you can elect to simply withdraw your application for annexation because it will be between the first and second readings. Or if after meeting with staff, you still feel that there is a need for you to annex, and that's your personal decision, then we will move. and that's your personal decision, then we will move forward with a second vote on the ordinances.
Well, I don't know that it's going to make any difference because as soon as that lot number two, I have a buyer for that, and as soon as I sell that, actually before I can sell it, it has to be annexed. And lot three, which like Scott said, is right next to the city sewer, so it would have to be annexed. So my only option would be to have lot one not annexed and the other two lots annexed, which I'm guessing is probably going to cause a lot more problems and extend the time of what we can do.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not sure we as counsel can solve that issue for you tonight, but I think working with staff, you can figure out what is in your best interest, and just let us know.
Okay. Can I talk to my son just a minute?
Yeah, absolutely.
And I can, from a staff standpoint, I can touch on this a little bit, too. This is a good example of a subdivision that happened a couple of years ago where some exceptions were made. They probably shouldn't have been made at the time, and we're kind of picking up the pieces now. These are conversations that we've had over the last year and that we'll continue to have to make sure we have some pretty firm concrete policies and plans in place, but also keep that in mind.
Okay. I think we need to go ahead and proceed with the annexation between the two readings, and then like I say, we can maybe talk to staff. Now, if we do that, will you still vote for the second reading on the 16th?
If you and staff are ready, I mean, we, we can vote as soon as the 16th.
Okay.
That's our plan.
I have one more question. I have neighbors out there who were annexed into the city off of the same water line who were de-annexed at their request. If we annex all three lots now, is it possible to de-annex lot one at a later date?
That would be a question that you and our planning staff would have to work on, I think, in the next two weeks. I don't think we're going to get to the bottom of that tonight.
Okay.
Yeah. So I just don't think that we can answer that question with 100% certainty for you tonight. But I do think, I think we're, in your best interest for us to vote tonight to keep the process moving. It doesn't tie you to anything that you can't put a stop to after further discussions with your family and with city staff.
Okay. Yeah, I think we just need to proceed, and hopefully this will maybe help the city and the county come up with some new guidelines for these properties that are in the county that attach to city services, because this has been a nightmare from day one.
It sounds like we do have guidelines, we made exceptions to them, and that's gotten us to where we are. So maybe we're learning that we shouldn't make exceptions to the rules we do have.
Well, yeah, we've talked about this a lot.
Okay. I think we've taken up enough time on public comment on this. I think we have a plan to go forward that it seems like counsel and you are in agreement to go forward tonight. And then you're going to work with staff before we get to a second reading.
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Mr. Blowers.
And I think he wants to call me.
Thank you. Okay, so on the first item, which is the resolution, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2024-01 as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote. Oh, my computer logged me out. Hang on.
Don't ever accuse me.
Oh goodness, I don't even see my, my voting didn't come up. Hang on, I'm going to come back in the meeting. I'm going to leave. I'm going to come back.
I don't know why I'm looking up.
I still don't have a voting screen, but I vote yes on that. And that passes unanimously, five zero, which takes us to the next piece of the annexation, which is first reading of Ordinance 2654, which is counsel, it's an ordinance for the city of Montrose for the annexation of the Blowers addition. And as we discussed, this is the first reading, which means that if counsel votes yes on this tonight, it would still require a second reading and a second vote before being enacted. Is there, I'll hold a hearing for this first reading. Is there any additional public comment for this item tonight? Please go ahead and introduce yourself for the record.
Joe Allen Blowers. I live on Lincoln Road, and I am the owner of lot one of that subdivision. Through this whole process, we, we did speak with tri-county, and they said they were happy to serve that lot as long as they had a letter from the city saying that they could do so, and that, I don't know if it, it got overlooked or, or what. But that lot does access off of a county road, not a city road. So we're, those, those are just some of the issues that we need to work through with this. But I am the owner of that lot.
Okay.
And, you know, it's, it's been a long, long process. I don't understand why we can't leave that lot in the county, access it off a county road, hook it to tri-county, and just be done with it.
And it sounds like that's something that you, you and your father are going to talk with staff about.
We've, we've talked to staff numerous times about it, and this is what, this is the path we were told that we had to take. We didn't have a choice.
Okay, are you asking us to vote no on your annexation?
Not, not at this point, but I, because it, like, like Mr. Reed said, it would just delay us more.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Counsel, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass Ordinance 2654 on the first reading as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Please vote. So that takes us to item 13, Ordinance 2655, and this is the zoning of the Blowers addition. It's an ordinance providing for the zoning of the Blowers addition as RL Rural Living District as presented by staff, the supporting reasons for that, and the Planning Commission vote on this particular agenda item. We would hold a hearing as well, and just like the previous ordinance, this ordinance would require two readings and doesn't go into effect until counsel reads it a second time in two weeks at the soonest and votes on it a second time. Is there any public comment for this hearing?
I just have a question.
Okay.
When can I get with these stillmen? Will they contact me, or I need to contact them?
Why don't you, why don't you and our planning manager get together when we finish? He can step out and talk to you after we vote.
Oh, tonight?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Like just right outside those doors tonight, you can make up.
To set up a time.
To set up a time, not to answer all your questions, but to set up a time.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counsel, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to pass Ordinance 2655 on first reading as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. It doesn't look like, Jace, that we need you on this next item, so if you could, thank you so much. He's going to step out and make plans to figure out when you guys can get together and start working on getting some of your answers figured out. Item number 14, and if anyone else feels like they, like Mr. Murphy, if you need to join them or something. Okay. Item 14 is the 2024 Baldridge Park Master Plan Award Recommendation, and this is City Council consideration of the award of a contract for the Baldridge Park Master, the Matter Plan according to this, I think it's a master plan, to Barry Dunn McNeil &amp; Parker LLC of Portland, Maine, in the amount of $174,048. And I will turn this over to our team of Public Works Director Jim Shide and our Parks Superintendent Dan Payne.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Counsel. So nothing has changed on this since we, but I'll give a brief overview. So this is, as you said, for a master plan process for our Baldridge Park, which, as you may know, our Baldridge Park is a very busy centerpiece of our park system, includes Cerise Park, River Bottom Park, Sunset Mesa Sports Complex, Ude McNeil Fields and Holly Park, and many amenities within those parks. Again, a very busy and very active part of our park system. There are several parts of the parks within Baldridge Regional Park that have been updated or added recently, and I think of like the River Bottom restroom or the Montrose Rotary Amphitheater. And there's also several systems that are reaching their end of life and are needing replacement or updating, like the playground, irrigation systems, things like that. But prior to rebuilding those systems as a direct replacement, we're updating our master plan to account for changes in use in the park and future uses, and to accommodate for best practices in several different areas like water conservation, accessibility, and park design. So that's what started this process, as far as us issuing an RFP for the service of master plan. We received five proposals, and after reviewing and scoring in experience, approach, strategy, which would include a lot of community engagement and of course fees, the Barry Dunn, McNeil &amp; Parker scored the highest, and we will need to come up with a clever acronym for them that's easier to say than their name. But, but either way, we are recommending award to them, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Counsel, just any questions? Okay. I would consider any public comment on this item. I think we're out of public at this point, so I'm going to assume that there is no public comment. Counsel doesn't have any questions. We went over this in a work session last December, or November, at the end of last year, we went over this extensively, and I think we're prepared to move forward with a motion.
I move to award a contract for the Baldridge Park Master Plan to Barry Dunn, McNeil &amp; Parker LLC of Portland, Maine, in the amount of $174,048 as presented.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. Please vote.
I would say if it's the Mater Plan, we could grow some Maters.
Mater Plan.
Maters and taters.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Our last action item on our agenda tonight is item 15. Jace hasn't come back. Okay. Item 15, 2024 Asphalt Crushing Award Recommendation. Counsel consideration of the award of a professional services agreement to Rocky Mountain Aggregate and Construction LLC for asphalt crushing at the city's material storage yard in the amount not to exceed 200,000. And back to our Public Works Director, Jim Shide.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Counsel. So yeah, you, you said most of it for me. This is for crushing of our stocked asphalt that is in our pit up on the Sunset Mesa. We will use this asphalt after it's crushed for, for several things, like building and maintaining some of our milling trails that we have throughout town, gravel road resurfacing, base work, and also it's used in our asphalt recycler that we use for repairing potholes and patches throughout town. And after reviewing the proposals we received for this, the scoring matrix came out to where Rocky Mountain Aggregate was the recommended award for this, although their price was the highest of the proposals, there were several things within their proposal that guided us to selecting them for this award. And Rocky Mountain Aggregate is a reputable company that we have worked with in, in the area in the past, so. They're all, and their rates that they propose is actually what we had, really closely what we had estimated for this as well. We anticipated to be very close to the rate that we received from them. So we are recommending award to Rocky Mountain Aggregate in the amount not to exceed 200,000, which is what we budgeted in the 2024 budget for this item.
Great. Thank you very much, Counsel. Any further questions, or any questions?
For clarity, this is only to crush a portion of our stockpile, about what proportion is for the public's information?
We're not exactly sure yet. Hopefully, most of it. So we're anticipating probably three-quarters of the pile would be crushed for 200,000. And then there'll be some cleanup in following years for the remaining asphalt that's left, and also we have quite a pile of concrete that we'd like to crush as well, as long as it makes sense financially.
If you do the math, it's a lot of tons of asphalt.
Yes. It's a very large pile.
They, they crush the concrete also?
Yeah, they can. Yeah. Yeah, they can. And in the past, we, it hasn't made sense financially for us to do that, as it costs more to crush it than we could go buy a road base for, so that's why we haven't done that. But in this case, for the asphalt, it, it does make sense. It's cheaper than buying it.
For the concrete, do they have to remove any rebar before they crush it, or is that part of the process?
It can be done in the crushing process, yeah.
Any more questions? Kind of interesting. Okay. Any public comment on this award contract? Okay, seeing none, then I would accept a motion from a council member.
Madam Mayor, I move to award a professional services agreement to Rocky Mountain Aggregate and Construction LLC for asphalt crushing at the city's material storage yard in the amount not to exceed $200,000 as presented.
I'll say.
Thank you. We have a first and multiple seconds. Please go ahead and vote.
Or a second, second.
A third.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you. That was our last agenda item tonight, and so now we'll move on, and we always end our meeting with staff reports and city council comments. So are there any reports from staff members, anything the staff needs to make counsel aware of, or our public via the, the recording and broadcast of tonight's meeting? Okay, I don't see anything. Great. When it does start to snow, we're going to come back to that snow removal plan, but until it does, I don't think people care a lot. But they'll care a lot once it starts piling up.
Did you look at the forecast?
Well, yeah, but they don't, until it's actually on the ground, no one wants to know about it.
That's right, yeah. And we'll try to push out more social media regarding snow policies and such when it snows.
That was great. It was a great presentation this morning, and I do think once it snows, our public will really want to know more about that information. Thanks for the great presentation this morning. Counsel, any comments from counsel tonight?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Welcome back. We had a very productive and busy first day back on, on the work schedule for January 2nd. So thank you, everyone, for a long but productive day. Appreciate it. Motion to adjourn. So moved, thank you, we're adjourned.